Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We will get started. My name is Wayne Kazmercheck. I'm the superintendent of White Bear Lake Schools. It's my pleasure to welcome you this evening. I had a little bit of a rain shower, so it's a good time to be inside. Hopefully, it'll stop for when you get back out. Pretty good turnout for the first day of summer vacation. Alright, so we're here for a school board recognition ceremony. We have two groups of students that recently represented the district at state-level competitions, but are not able to be here with us tonight because they're attending their end-of-the-year banquets this evening. So please join me in congratulating the following students. I'll read through the list, and then we can give them an applause, even though they're not here. The boys' golf team members who competed at state were Joe Fredalone, Camden O'Malley, Jake Paulson, Leighton Road, and coached by Craig Nazwick. So congratulations. And then, girls' track team members who competed at state, Victoria Adabisi, Emily Brockberg, Lauren Eckerly, Jordan Gast, Danielle Madden, Bailey McCullough, Madeline Sander, Erica Townley, Maddie Verkirke, and Caitlin Wallace. So congratulations to them. And now, I'd like to welcome Dr. Allison Gillespie up here, principal at North Campus, to continue the program.
Good evening. It's a great honor for me to be here tonight to honor our boys' track team members who represented the district in last week's state track meet. Adam Baer.
Isaac Mariama. Assistant Coach Dan Destatch. Assistant Coach Doug Hicks. Assistant Coach Diane Kovacic. Assistant Coach David Percival. Assistant Coach John Pratt. And Head Coach Tom Paulson.
If the parents and family members of our athletes could stand to be recognized as well, we'll ask the student athletes and their coaches to come forward and get a picture taken, please.
So if you can line up into rows, so on the platform and off of the platform, make sure that your chin can see me as well as your eyes, and we'll be allowed to view. Perfect. Alright. Do you mind standing up? That'll be perfect. Thank you. Okay, look here. Awesome, one, two, and three. There you go, and then I'll get all the way to your parents. Oh, she's cute. Good job, Allison.
I'm Carrie Barth, and I'm one of the associate principals at South Campus, and I'm the district representative to intermediate District 916, which is located at the Century College campus. The following students represented the district in the HOSA, which competition, which stands for Health Occupation Students of America, the state conference, and also, we have a couple of people going to internationals in Orlando, which is awesome. HOSA focuses on promoting career opportunities in the healthcare industry and the enhancement of the quality of healthcare to all people. Charlotte Hetzer, she received first place in the Dental Terminology and Dental Science State Events, and she will be qualified to go to Orlando. Jenna Thomason placed third in the Dental Terminology Event. And Lindsay Tyreen also placed first in her events at HOSA as well, so congratulations.
Can we recognize that student's family also if they're here? I'm Christina Pierre. I'm the principal at Sunrise Park Middle School, and I'll be reading the names for our next group of students to be recognized. The following students and coaches competed at the state level for adapted softball. Jess Binfeld. Tavis Dean. Haley Gilbertson. Ariana Haynes. Sophia Indhar. Cole Kral. Luca Lindsey. Annie Murnane. Maggie Murnane. Mikey Parnell. Alex Stenon. Assistant Coach Abby Olson. Also Assistant Coach Nikki Edstrom. And Head Coach Joe Dustin. Alright, would the parents and families of these students also please stand and be Okay, softball players, come on over. We're going to do a picture.
There we go. One, two, and three, look here. Make sure you're... Perfect. Great, thank you, and I'll let your parents take pictures. Yeah, we're trying to see if you can see.
Alright, thank you again. One more. Alright, that concludes our program this evening. A regular school board meeting starts at seven. I think there might be some...well, maybe not anymore. Oh yeah, there are still some cookies over there. Grab more than one, unless your parents tell you not to. But thank you for coming out this evening, and great job, students. This concludes these events for this school year, so we'll see you again in the fall.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this school board meeting for Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Fahey here. Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Beloit?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Allison?
Here.
Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have an agenda before us, so would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Allison, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, we have before us an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which is our sundry items that we have month-to-month. This month is no different, and we would want to thank the community for their generosity and the gifts received to the school district. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. This will require a roll call vote.
Fahey, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Okay, we have consent agenda is approved. Next on our list is the...B is the public forum. We ask that if you'd like to speak before the public forum, that you fill out a white card, which is on the table over there. I have one card in front of me. Lydia Erickson, did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Alright, please come forward. Welcome.
Hello. How are you guys doing today?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. I would like the administration to consider the following. The White Bear Lake area school board policy states that "it is not the intention of this policy to abridge the rights of students to express political, religious, philosophical, or similar opinions by wearing a peel on which messages are stated." Though the board policy states that intentions of the dress code are not meant to hold students back from expressing themselves, it is doing quite the opposite and so much more. In fact, not only do dress codes hold students back from expressing themselves fully, but they also shame young women and perpetrate rape culture. In the White Bear Lake Student Handbook, it states that "low neckline, spaghetti straps, backless tops, or halter tops are not allowed. All tops must cover shoulders and midriffs. Bottoms that are too short, suggestive, reveal underclothes, or the lower back area is inappropriate." This is on page 160 of the Dress Code Planner. These rules slut-shame young women and contribute to the over-sexualization of them. These dress codes have reinforced the stereotype about how one's appearance is linked to their intentions, personality, level of education, or socioeconomic level, implying that if one does not follow these rules, that they are asking for it. Whether the girl does or does not show her shoulders or midriffs, she is never asking for it. School board policy enforces these rules by saying "clothing that is too revealing, distracting, or disruptive to the educational process, and other clothing that is not keeping with community standards." And it goes on, "the students will be directed to modifications or will be sent home for the day." This is stated on Policy 504-3. Boys' educations are picked over girls when a girl's education interrupted because their clothing is too revealing or distracting, and their need to cover up. By telling girls to cover up, it is taking away the responsibility from boys who are sexualizing and objectifying them in the first place. The current dress code policy, both at the district and high school level, also reinforced society's rule about how girls are responsible for preventing certain situations from happening. These strict rules reinforce victim blaming due to one's appearance, which is seen as an excuse for rape accusations. This is a form of rape culture because it is partially blaming the victim for what is happening to them instead of blaming the person who did the crime. Dress codes also stereotype boys as well. These imply that boys cannot control their sexual desires. This is offensive to both genders. Also, when has anyone actually said, "excuse me, but your bra/spaghetti strap is distracting me?" The problem lies with the person who objectifies and sexualizes high school girls because of their appearance, not the girls herself. This policy seems to conflict with other school board policies, including 102, 413, and 522. Laura Bates from the New York Times once said, "Dress codes send a powerful message, teaching young adults that girls' bodies are dangerous, powerful, and that boys are biologically programmed to objectify and harass them." In conclusion, I would like the school board to look over and update the dress code policy, make it more inclusive and more gender-neutral and less directed at teenage girls, girls' bodies. By the way, the outfit that I'm wearing today could be considered objectifying the dress code policy. That is all. Thank you so very much for listening to what I have to say.
Thank you. Dr. Kazmercheck, isn't this part of the...this is part of the updated policy that we're coming for the first reading this evening?
Right, this is one of the policies. It's under review, and Lydia and I and Dr. Gillespie met previously, and so we have been in conversation with her. So thank you for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts. Well said.
Thank you, Lydia. Any other comments?
I would just ask if it's possible to get her a copy of the board proceedings for tonight so she could review the changes for Policy 504.
Ms. B.
Lydia, also, a lot of your comments, we had a discussion at a previous work study, and a lot of those things were brought up by board members. So thank you very much, and you probably will be very interested in reading in the board packet, Policy 504, the changes that the policy committee are making. It's up tonight for a first reading, and then it will be on a subsequent agenda for the second reading and approval, and we have made a lot of changes based on feedback we've gotten from students and our own views about the outdated student dress policy. So thank you very much for speaking up. I know that's not easy to do in a public forum. Thank you.
Ms. Allison.
I just want to echo that and commend your bravery. It's not easy to stand up and say the things that you did, but it was very well said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job. Next, we'll move on to the first...actually, let me back up. Is there anybody else that would like to speak under public forum? I know that I don't have any more cards, but I want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to speak if they'd like. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to C1, which is the Sauer Family Foundation Grants. Ms. Paul, did I say that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmercheck, members of the board. I'm pleased to welcome Colleen O'Keefe, who is the Executive Director of the Sauer Family Foundation. The Sauer Family Foundation grants, provides grants to support work that keeps children safe, supports families, and programs that decrease toxic stress and moves students into resiliency. The ALIVE program is a preventative approach to addressing stressors that impact learning. Grants were awarded to three of our elementary schools, Willow Lane, Birch Lake Elementary, and Badness Heights Elementary. In addition, through the leadership of Lisa Orin, who worked on this, with her team, they submitted a grant for conscious discipline, and that has a goal of fostering the emotional intelligence of staff and children in early learning programs. And the Sauer Family Foundation also awarded a grant to support that program for our early childhood programs. So please welcome Colleen O'Keefe.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Tonight, I just want to talk just a little bit about the ALIVE program. It's important because we're just starting to understand the connection between toxic stress and children's behavior, and this is a program that helps children share their worries, and it reduces behavior problems and suspensions in schools because it has a restorative justice approach as well. I went to New Haven, Connecticut, and saw this program, and the teachers and principals there told me that they would, after they've had it in their program about five or six years, and, I mean, in their schools, and they told me that they will never work in another school without this program, which was a big endorsement for me. I was sold at that point, and then I was just so pleased when, in the White Bear Lake area schools, I saw school leaders and district leaders that understood this and were, you know, one, Chris Strife at Willow Lane was reading about trauma and the effects on children, and she was willing to give this a try, and it's been there two years now. So $105,000 will go to Willow Lane for the last year, this coming year, and then Birch Lake and Badness Heights Elementary are starting their programs this fall. And so, the grants are multi-year, so those grants are for two years. So total for this year, it's $295,000 for this program for the district, so.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
With that, we will move on to our next informational item, C2, which is the Excellence in Financial Reporting Awards. Mr. Walt?
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Dr. Kazmercheck, I'd like to invite Tom Wazork and Jenna Battalia to come on up. The White Bear Lake Area School Board recently received an Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Association of School Business Officers and the Government Finance Officers Association. These recognitions are the highest form of recognition given in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. This...White Bear Lake has a long history of success in this area. For 19 years running, White Bear Lake has received both of those high awards. By participating in the ASBO and GFOA certification programs, school districts demonstrate their commitment to transparency and financial accounting. Applicants submit their comprehensive annual financial report for a review by professionals who then give feedback on the report, and if the...it's possible that the school district would then qualify for the certification, and indeed, we did by both organizations. So I'd like to congratulate our Director of Finance, Tom Wazork, and our Accountant, Jenna Battalia, for their fine work providing documentation for the audit and then preparing the report for the recognition. One note additionally is that one of the benefits to the district regarding these two recognitions is that it can result in an improved bond rating from Standard &amp; Poor's, and since 2010, during this time when we receive both these awards, we've been at AA bond rating that entire time. So we think this is a good thing that we're able to accomplish this. So congratulations, Mr. Wazork and Ms. Battalia.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
We have the ASBO plaque here. I'll just bring that to the board. You can pass that around, and we are expecting the certificate from GFOA any time now.
Alright, thank you. Any comments, questions? Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next informational item, C3, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmercheck.
Alright, thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Before this evening's meeting, the school board honored students who represented the district in state-level contests, and those were Health Occupation Students of America, Adapted Softball Team, Boys' Track Team Members, Girls' Track Team Members, and Boys' Golf Team Members. The district has been celebrating strong finishes to the school year. We enjoyed welcoming proud parents and grandparents in for celebrations, and fifth-grade graduations. Older graduates who were celebrated include students in our Transition Plus program and our Area Learning Center, and at White Bear Lake Area High School. Congratulations to all of our graduates and families of graduates on your successes. Photos from end-of-career ceremonies can be found posted on the district's Facebook page. In celebration of our graduates, enjoy this "What It Means to Be a White Bear Grad" video featuring members of our class of 2019. The video was recorded at this year's senior walk, a great time during which graduating seniors paraded through the halls of their former elementary schools to cheering students
Being a White Bear grad means being respectful.
Responsible.
And ready.
Being a White Bear grad means being prepared to have a full-time job.
Being a White Bear grad means being determined to succeed.
Being a White Bear grad means growing up with your classmates and watching them become family.
Being a White Bear grad means having fun with your friends and playing sports.
Being a White Bear grad means being excited to learn, being respectful to the people around you, and building community.
Being a White Bear grad means going to market fest every Thursday.
Being a White Bear grad has taught me to accept and converse with all types of people, including different students from all backgrounds.
Being a White Bear Lake grad to me means having lifelong friends and making lifetime memories that you'll cherish forever throughout the community and having the support of everyone.
Being a White Bear grad means working hard in everything you do to support your community because our community is awesome.
Being a White Bear grad means that you've made so many friendships throughout these years, and that you've engaged in so many classes and with your teachers so well.
Being a White Bear grad means to create beauty and attain quality. I've learned that from my senior year in band.
Being a White Bear grad means so much to me and all my friends.
Being a White Bear grad means being above the line.
Being a White Bear grad means you're, you know, you're from White Bear, small town, everyone's close, everyone knows everyone. You make countless memories being on the lake, walking...
Thank you for the students and all the staff who's been helping me out of AT+
Plus.
All right, thank you, Marissa, for showing that.
All right, we'll get this back.
All right, success has also come to retirement for staff members who were celebrated at a recent retirement dinner. The district honored retirees who served the district for a combined total of nearly 1,100 years of service. Congratulations, and thank you for your work on behalf of our students and families. The district will be well-represented at upcoming community celebrations. Watch for our writing contest winners to be walking in Friday's Manitow days parade, and be sure to read their award-winning articles in the White Bear Press. Also stop by the district's Market Fest booth Thursdays, June 13th through July 25th in downtown White Bear Lake to receive a free pencil and bear paw temporary tattoo. Free summer meals are available at four district buildings throughout the community for kids and teens who are 18 years old and younger. Locations include Birch Lake Elementary, Central Middle School, Lake Ayers Elementary, and White Bear Lake Area High School South Campus. Find additional information on the district's website, www.isd624.org, or at www.someareatsmn.org. Thank you to all of our students, families, and community members for a terrific 2018-19 school year. Enjoy your summer.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Kasmicek. With that, we'll move into our first discussion item. D1 is the first reading of school board policy for 13, 504, 506, 525, 611, and 802. Is there any comments, concerns? Ms. Ellison?
I have a clarity comment for 504, number six, oh, C6, pardon me. Currently, the change reads head covering, comma, or item that conceals a student identity are not allowed to be worn in the building. As it's written, it sounds like any head covering and items that conceal a student's identity are not allowed, but that's not what the policy change is saying. It should be something to the effect of head coverings that conceal a student identity. So, it's a, it's a small change, but I think that the way that it's currently written, it's not very clear.
Okay. Dr. Kasmicek?
Okay, so, yeah, we will modify that before the second reading. So, it'd say something like head coverings that conceal a student's identity are not allowed.
Right.
Correct?
Right, because, I mean, this, these changes fundamentally changed this policy about head coverings.
Yep.
And that head coverings can be worn.
Yeah, and it's less clear than it should be.
Right.
Based on the way it's written now. So, we'll clear that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else regarding any of the policies for their first reading? Okay, hearing none. All these policies will come back next month for their second reading with the correction that is in there, and will all be back next month. With that, we will go into our first operational item, E1, which is approval of the fiscal year 20 preliminary budget. Mr. Wald?
Okay. Good evening again. At the May 20th board work session, we spent some time digging into the preliminary budget for 2019-20 fiscal year. That was a big day because that was the day that the governor and the legislators came to an agreement on a budget package. It was really, though, much later in the week before they ironed out that agreement, and so it took some time for MDE to be able to calculate those changes. So, it's really only been in the recent two weeks that we've been able to get a better idea on what that's going to mean for us. This visual shows the budget cycle for the fiscal year. I've been showing this visual every time I talk to the board about budget, just as a reminder that our budget cycle really does go on throughout the school year, and there's adjustments and planning that occurs many times throughout the year. So, it's also good for the public to be aware that it is a, it is a process that takes all year to complete. The preliminary budget for the fiscal year is typically approved by the board every year in June. We stick to this calendar because it's typically unclear what the state budget will include for schools until late May, as was the case this year. And we refer to this as a preliminary budget because in normal conditions, we make revisions to the budget for board approval in December or January. Changes, adjustments to the budget might be due to enrollment being different than what our assumption was when we built the budget. It might be that our audit provides information that leads to logical adjustments later in the year. So, we'll be back in December or January with budget adjustments. The final agreement by the governor and the legislators was 2% and 2% on the student formula for each year of the biennium. That's $126 and $129, first and second year. For the first time, the legislature has approved some funds to support the cross-subsidy. So, we'll see cross-subsidy relief. We've been talking about that quite a lot this year as it's been a priority for almost every educational organization. Safe Schools indicates $30 million. That's in parentheses because if the budget balance exceeds the February surplus prediction and after $33 million in other appropriations are funded, then there will be money granted to Safe Schools. So, we're not holding our breath on that. We're hopeful that there will be some money for Safe Schools, but there's a lot of ifs in there before we see that. And then, Voluntary Pre-K and School Readiness Plus, a program that we've developed well the last couple of years, will continue to be funded. So, that's good news on the School Readiness Plus front. We've talked about some of the challenges that public education faces, and one is that, that leg in the student formula. And this graph you've seen before, the green line shows the funding level that public education has received in the form of student aid since 2003. The red line indicates what that aid level would be if it had merely kept pace with the rate of inflation. Looking closely at the green line, you see that it flattened out over several bienniums, and it didn't make a recovery, recovery in either of those bienniums. And so, we lost ground, and we continued to lose that ground. And so, when we see a 2% increase to the formula, we're thankful for that. It's what we were, it's what our assumptions were based on, but it certainly doesn't meet the needs of our schools. And had we just kept rate, paced with the rate of inflation since 2003, that'd be an additional $618 per student, an amount of almost $6 million that we'd be seeing on an annual basis. The second challenge that we face is the underfunding of special education, and just going to skip through that slide. It just show a graphic indicating the cross-subsidy in White Bear Lake. You see, in 2014-15 is when the cap was introduced in special education, and it hit some school districts more than others. White Bear Lake was in that category of schools that were hit hard by the cap, and it has led to a significant cross-subsidy since 2014-15 to the tune of about $11 million in White Bear Lake. This is the first time that the legislature has really addressed that cross-subsidy, and we're thankful that they are. We'll be looking closely at how that will impact us. We're thinking, at this point, it looks like it will provide relief for about 15% of the cross-subsidy. In your packet is the, is this budget. I don't expect you to be able to read it on the screen tonight, but it is in the board packet, and I'll provide a summary of it later. This document shows the proposed budget for 2019-20, which is labeled as fiscal year 20, and then a longer-term look toward the next three fiscal years. The out years show a budget built on assumptions but are helpful for us as we look toward trends. This is, a slide shows a summary of that document. And so, looking at the green column is our current year revised budget. That's the board-approved budget. It was approved in February of 2019. It shows a reduction of the fund balance of $3.5 million, and the unassigned fund balance dropped to 10.35. The first orange column summarizes our proposed budget for 2019-20, or FY20. Revenues were built on two primary assumptions. We made the assumption that we'd get 2% on the formula from the legislature, and that's indeed what we got. And we also made the assumption that we would have an additional 100 students, and those numbers are shaping up where we think that's a realistic goal of 100 students. Those two assumptions bring us to a total revenues of $117,741,000. Our projected expenditures for FY20 were $120 million, and those were cut back by approximately $2 million, bringing us to expenditures of $118,268,000. And that will leave us with a negative balance this year, or next year, at $527,000, and unassigned fund balance of 10.51. But as we look ahead to FY21, the $500,000 in budget reductions are in the budget. By doing so, we're able to continue the upward trend in the fund balance, and you see the fund balance for FY21 goes up to 10.67. And we'll look at this again at our mid-year adjustment, and we're hoping that those numbers will look even a little better. So, at that point, the cross-subsidy relief will be, we'll know where we stand with that, and our audit will be in place. And so, we're hoping at that point, we're going to be able to make some adjustments to that. But with the $500,000 in adjustments or cuts next year, that would, we'd be $421,000 revenues over expenditures, fund balance of 10.67. And then, you can see those projected out, and by FY23, that fund balance is creeping up ever so slightly. And we, as I said, we're hoping that when we come to you with mid-year adjustments, we'll see even more movement on that fund balance. Recall that the district policy asked for a 12.5% to 15% fund balance. That's about six weeks of expenditures for us, and so we want to get back into that range. In community services, recall that we had, we had designed to spend down the community services fund balance to bring that down to 22.2%. So, that's a healthy fund balance in community services. It can be a little bit difficult to predict revenues in community services because some of the programs are fee-based, and participation can vary. And so, we see that in FY20, we'll spend that down to about 16.4%, which is more in line with where we want to be in community. There's no reason for us to carry a more significant fund balance than that, and so that's, that's where we'll move in community. In nutrition services, we're at 11.6%, again, a very healthy fund balance in nutrition services. She's spending that down a little bit this year with some equipment purchases. Revenue decrease in year two is, might be a surprise to you when you see that. That's actually planning for snow days. This year, we, we didn't budget for a decrease in revenue for snow days. Each time we have a snow day, it accounts for about $11,000 in lost revenue for nutrition services. They have most of their expenditure still because we still pay the staff on those days, but we don't see the revenue. So, we actually budgeted for some snow days next year. So, Dr. Kasmicek, you have three to play with. We're also looking at buying some serving line equipment, software, and hardware upgrades, and a new delivery truck. So, that's the budget summary for next year. Our Director of Finance, Tom Wazork, is here to answer, help answer any questions you might have. But before that, I'll just note that the recommendation is the approval of, for the board to approve fiscal year 2020 preliminary budget as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Ellison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion regarding the budget? Mr. Chapman?
Mr. Wald, just a quick question here on, of the projected budget, line 53, where it talks about change in, net change in fund balance for 2020 of $527,000. Did that change much, if any, from what we've seen in the past? I mean, saw at the work study because you mentioned in the, the cover memo that the adjustments were made, the way it sounds since that, and I was just curious if there were any, there was any significant change to the fund balance, up or down, as a result of those adjustments?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to remember what our last presentation on that was. We've, we have reviewed and updated revenues and expenditures a little bit, and I think we were in that same ballpark for 2021, for 20, yeah, for 2021.
Okay.
So, that was a similar question I had. I think these numbers reflect essentially what was presented to the, to the school board at the work-study meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, other than maybe a minor, minor tweak here and there, these are, this was essentially what you, what was reviewed with the board.
Yeah, okay.
Couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Other questions, comments, concerns? I know that we've been going through this stuff at work studies, and so I know that there's been a lot of conversation regarding such. With that, this will require a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Ballloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we will move on to our next operational item, action on the property and casual insurance, 2019-2020. Assuming this is also you, Mr. Wald?
Yes. Annually, the board acts on property and casualty insurance rates for the coming year. As you know, White Bear Lake Schools is a member of the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust and have been for the past five years. Dr. Kasmicek was a member of the MIST board, and since he became superintendent, Director of Finance, Tom Wazork, now sits on the MIST board. Through the cooperative, the MIST cooperative, we're able to purchase insurance, property and casualty insurance at more competitive rates. Last year, we saw a jump of just 2.47% change in our property and casual rates, and it's a bit different environment this year. The markets become far more challenging in property and casualty. The losses across the country are impacting everyone's insurance, and so the fires and floods and tornadoes that, those losses get picked up by the excess property insurance, and it gets spread out across the country, and we're starting to feel that impact. Even though we may not have seen those same type of losses in Minnesota, that they do get spread out across the country. The 12.97% for FY20 is largely because the company that provides our excess property insurance is no longer providing excess insurance policies. The losses from across the country spread out, affecting everyone, and so we are switching from Hartford to Travelers for our excess property insurance. Our rates will increase $37,379. We recommend that the board move to approve the property and casualty insurance package with the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust in the amount of $326,520 effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, a second by Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Any discussion? Bring the motion. I have one. Ms. Ballloy?
Did we anticipate this at all, the increase?
No, I, we weren't, last year when this occurred, that was a conversation, I should say, last year when we had the 2.47%, that was a conversation that occurred because we were expecting to see a little bit of an increase, and we were told at that point that the impact legs a bit, and so it's just catching up to us now. We, we weren't necessarily expecting 13%, and had Hartford stayed in there, we might have been able to moderate that a little bit, but this was higher than we expected. But we did expect a jump.
Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, just to piggyback on top of your question, Ms. Ballloy, the, we're seeing this, where I work, at Fairview, we've seen quite a, we've been hearing about large jumps occur.
I mean, I don't see the Harveys and Marias kind of dissipating anytime soon. They seem to be happening more and more often, and they're just going to spread the money around.
Yeah, I think you're probably right. We may see this more frequently, and I also think that speaks to the reason why we're where we are with other school districts pooling our resources together. I think we might be able to weather it better than districts who are standalone, just kind of at the whim of the market. We actually have some buying power in the pool, so we're probably positioned to handle it better than we would be otherwise.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Got a motion and a second. This will require a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to our next operational item, E3, which is action on the workers' compensation insurance for 2019-2020. Mr. Wald.
Yeah, last year, we brought a significant decrease in our workers' comp insurance, a minus 6.4%. And at that point, our broker complimented our human resources department for their outstanding administration of our workers' comp claims. And so, hats off to our HR department. But this year, we're seeing a 4% increase, and that's largely because of increased payroll. So we saw actual slight decrease in rate, but the increase is really a result of increased payroll expenses. So we're at 4% for 2019-20. We're still with the same provider, Dakota Truck Underwriters. And so, the recommendation is move to accept the quota of $597,300 from Dakota Truck Underwriters for workers' compensation insurance, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
You've heard the motion. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Ms. Ellison. Any discussion regarding the motion? Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Wald, do you recall, it looks like our mod has gone down, experience modification factor? Do you know what it was last year by chance? If you don't, that's fine, but...
I don't. Do you remember? Excuse me?
From, I think it was 1.11 last year to 1.10 this year.
Okay, so it just went slightly. I was, okay, I was thinking it was higher than that. Okay. Then the other question I had, and I think I've brought it up pretty much every year for the last several, there was discussion at one point of having the workers' compensation in a pooling arrangement, just like the property casualty for MIST. Do you know where that stands and why nothing's occurred on that front?
I can take a stab at it unless, Tom, you've been part of the conversations more.
It hasn't come up yet.
Yeah, well, there, MIST just never got it across the finish line with the regulators. What would be the agency that would approve that?
Farmers.
Yeah. Never quite got through that process. And they, again, the concept is sound. In fact, we'd probably realize greater savings in the workers' comp than we would in the property and casualty if we were able to pool.
Especially with 20-some school districts.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the idea, but there hasn't been, we haven't been able to move it through the approval process. They've tried. I mean, they've certainly tried over and over again, and I haven't been part of the conversations in the last year or two, but that's essentially where it was. It sounds like there hasn't been a lot of conversation about it since then. But, yeah, states where that's allowed, districts have seen tremendous savings in their workers' comp. But to date, districts haven't, school districts haven't been able to do this yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns over the motion? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. This also will require a roll call.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. We will move on to the next operational item, E5, which is action on the resolution for the bond referendum parameters. Mr. Wald. Oh, is it you or is it Dr. Kasemchek?
Uh, we're going to, we're both going to do it. We're going to take...
All right.
Tim, I'll kick us off, and then Tim will cover the bulk of the presentation. If we could go ahead in advance. So, all right, so, we're having a conversation about facilities. We've been having that for quite some time, and really in earnest in the last year. The idea of facilities planning emerged from our strategic planning process, not only this one, but the prior strategic plan as well. And so, within our strategic plan, within the strategic context of the school system that we're part of, facilities emerged. And there are several other reasons why we're having the conversation about facilities. And so, Tim is going to talk more about those. And really, what we're doing tonight is we're recapping for you and the audience, the process we've used, and we're going to review the recommendation that came forth back in April, and we'll talk about a few other things with the eye on asking you if we, if you're, as a board, want us to continue moving ahead with planning for what might be coming potentially here this fall. So, with that strategic plan, and then next, we've talked about enrollment quite a bit, but I think it's a good idea to recap the enrollment projections. And Mr. Wald, we'll take it over from here.
Sure. We had demographic studies completed by a former state demographer, Hazel Reinhardt, in 2017, and by Teamworks International in 2018. The two studies were very similar, but the Teamworks International study looked more at the projected out land development over the next several years, land that was scheduled to be developed, and then land that had the potential to be developed. Our facilities committee agreed on using a number of 75% ag development. If you look at the graph at the orange bar, the orange bar shows our current capacity. So, beginning in 2017-18 through 2027, if we do nothing to our facilities, that will remain our capacity over the next decade. Now, the variety of lines indicate different levels of buildout of available ag land in the district. The light blue line at the bottom line, or the light blue line two above the orange, shows our projected enrollment if only those housing starts that were scheduled in 2018 were built and no others. And there's already been others scheduled, especially in the north end of our district. And so, it's very likely that we'll exceed that light blue line of 9,649 students. The committee read through the study, spent a lot of time discussing it, and agreed that a 75% ag buildout was the most likely number, number they felt comfortable using. And that put us at projected enrollment of 10,806 students, an increase of 2,228 over the next nine years. At the elementary school, if you follow the green line again, you can see we had an increase of 594 students, and actually in 24 to 27, that number would be slightly higher. At the middle school, grade six to eight, that number would be about 645 additional And at the high school, we would expect 988 students for the 27, 28 school year. And so, you look at the high school, and that line really jumps up late, which is logical, but we'll see significant increases in those numbers over time. Regarding safety and security, over the past 20 years, we've seen change in how we view safety and security, how we identify safety and security in our schools. And we've invested a great deal in the White Bear Schools to ensure that we have secure entrances in all of our schools. We have several schools where we'd like to improve those more. South Campus and the Area Learning Center come to mind. We have, we have security cameras, but we have limited and aging security camera systems. So we'd like to see increased interior and exterior security cameras. Also, in the realm of safety and security, we've noted as other, as our colleagues in public education have noted, that more and more parents, especially at the elementary level, are driving their children to school on a daily basis and picking them up as well, leading to parking lot safety as a real concern in our schools. We're seeing that at the middle school level too, and even a little bit at the high school level, the ninth and 10th grade more so, but we are seeing it at all levels. Regarding aging facilities and deferred maintenance needs, the average age of a school building in the White Bear Lake Schools is 50 years old. Some of our schools are older than that, and Onika was open in, I believe, 2004, so there's a 15-year-old school. So we do have some aging buildings in our school district. In those aging buildings, we have aging mechanical systems, aging roofs, aging parking lots, and aging building envelopes. All of those things we've maintained, and we have a great staff of people who maintain those systems well. But you can only maintain them and put Band-Aids on them for so long before significant investment needs to occur. Very much like your house, you fix as much as you can, and then at some point, you need to do a more significant investment, whether it be your furnace, or your siding, or your roof, or your driveway. And we're at that point in many of our buildings. Finally, the future of educational programming. There's been a demand over the last decade to create more collaborative and flexible learning spaces. Teachers and parents demand that for their students. Buildings designed 50 and 60 years ago were not designed to be flexible, and they were not designed for student movement. And so, the challenge of doing that, of providing that kind of opportunity for our students, is difficult in aging schools. And so, we recognize that as a need we need to address. The committee's charge, and so, the board charged the committee in October, approved this charge, and they said that, you said that the, you charged the administration to develop a facilities master plan with one or more scenarios for recommendation to the school board that will serve the district's educational goals, that it would be financially attainable and sustainable, it'd reflect our values and priorities in the school district, it would address and accommodate our pre-K-12 enrollment as well as other programs, it would meet our needs for the next decade, and then consider beyond 10 years where possible. It would be consistent with the district's strategic vision, it would recommend optimal use of facilities, accommodate enrollment, support educational delivery, along with rationale. So we began with your approval in October. We formed that committee, we began our work, and we set an agreement from the get-go that we would develop a comprehensive facilities master plan, and we would do so by agreement. So we had a committee of 90 people, about half of which were staff members at all levels, representing all school buildings, and community members, parents, and other community members representing all of our school sites. And we agreed that we would have 100% support of that group of 90 people at the end of our work, or we would continue our work. Administrators in the district were, attended all the meetings and discussions, but we were there for support purposes only. We were not voting members in the process. We just provided as much support as the committee, as the committees needed to do their work. The committee of 90 broke into three subcommittees. We looked at learning spaces. The learning spaces subcommittee was charged to look at the future of learning, early learning, building configuration. We looked at, we set needs around flexible, and buildings that would be flexible and adaptable to handle changes in the future, that would allow for collaboration and movement of students. We identified a need to provide adequate space for both current and anticipated early childhood space needs. And the committee asked, or set a goal to minimize transitions wherever possible. In some areas of our school district, Hugo specifically, our students have two more transitions than is the norm in most school districts around the country. And that's because we have a K-1 experience at Hugo Elementary, then grades two to five at Onika, then the students move on to Central, then on to North Campus, and then on to South Campus, two more transitions than is typical for across the country. All of our students have at least one more transition because they have a transition in the middle of their high school experience as well. We set, our community spaces committee also set needs statements around indoor and outdoor facilities, adaptive, and diverse, diversity, community, fine arts, specialized sports. We looked at things like, that our buildings would have adequate quantity of both indoor and outdoor spaces and locations for all users to support equitable access of facilities, that there'd be a variety of multipurpose spaces to address the needs of all users in our indoor and outdoor spaces, that all buildings would need to be relevant, or would meet relevant accessibility codes. Spaces would be multipurpose to maximize utilization, and we'd engage all ages, including spaces that would engage our senior citizens. In the physical conditions committee, we looked at equity of our facilities, safety, transportation, capacity and enrollment, the conditions of our buildings, and then flexible and future-ready spaces. So just a few of those needs were identified. Provide equitable access to facilities to meet the needs of all learners, implement an equity, safety and security standard that would apply to all buildings as it relates to safety, security, and transportation. Repurpose sites where possible, update the physical conditions, expanding of current facilities and new construction where needs identified. In all three of these committees, we identified dozens of needs, and so I've just highlighted a handful of them for you. And the committee worked very hard to consolidate those, sort them and make sense out of them hours and hours, really, just to go through those needs, group those needs, and not overwhelm our plan with them. So after seven months of committee process, 90 community members involved, at least 10 committee meetings, some people worked on another subcommittee that had more meetings, the three subcommittees, we came up with one comprehensive plan. And we're going to share that with you tonight, and I think actually Dr. Kasemchek's going to identify that plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wald. So I'll continue here, and then if you stay available...
We looked at, we set needs around flexible and buildings that would be flexible and adaptable to handle changes in the future, that would allow for collaboration and movement of students. We identified a need to provide adequate space for both current and anticipated early childhood space needs. And the committee asked, or set a goal to minimize transitions wherever possible. In some areas of our school district, Hugo specifically, our students have two more transitions than is the norm in most school districts around the country. And that's because we have a K-1 experience at Hugo Elementary, then grades two to five at Onika, then the students move on to Central, then on to North Campus, and then on to South Campus. Two more transitions than is typical for across the country. All of our students have at least one more transition because they have a transition in the middle of their high school experience as well. We set, our community spaces committee also set needs statements around indoor and outdoor facilities, adaptive and diverse, diversity, community, fine arts, specialized sports. We looked at things like that our buildings would have adequate quantity of both indoor and outdoor spaces and locations for all users to support equitable access of facilities. That there'd be a variety of multipurpose spaces to address the needs of all users in our indoor and outdoor spaces. That all buildings would need to be relevant or would meet relevant accessibility codes. Spaces would be multipurpose to maximize utilization and we'd engage all ages, including spaces that would engage our senior citizens. In the physical conditions committee, we looked at equity of our facilities, safety, transportation, capacity and enrollment, the conditions of our buildings, and then flexible and future-ready spaces. So just a few of those needs were identified. Provide equitable access to facilities to meet the needs of all learners. Implement an equity, safety, and security standard that would apply to all buildings as it relates to safety, security, and transportation. Repurpose sites where possible, update the physical conditions, expanding of current facilities and new construction where needs identified. In all three of these committees, we identified dozens of needs, and so I've just highlighted a handful of them for you. And the committee worked very hard to consolidate those, sort them and make sense out of them, hours and hours really, just to go through those needs, group those needs, and not overwhelm our plan with them. So after seven months of committee process, 90 community members involved, at least 10 committee meetings. Some people worked on another subcommittee that had more meetings. The three subcommittees, we came up with one comprehensive plan. And we're gonna share that with you tonight, and I think actually Dr. Kazmercheck's gonna identify that plan.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Wald. So I'll continue here and then if you stay available in case there are questions, we'll be able to answer them together. So again, just to recap, the recommendation that came to the board, you've seen this, you've seen, we've had multiple conversations, but I wanted to recap it here tonight. So the committee recommended, the committee recommendation was for district-wide additions and renovations to accommodate our projected enrollment growth. As highlighted earlier, we are projecting that growth. That 75% figure of ag land buildout was used. I think the only question is when that will occur. It's a matter of time. The houses are being built. And so we think the committee did well to land on that figure for the next, for enrollment growth over the next decade. Mr. Wald highlighted the safety and security improvements, some of those anyway, and then our deferred maintenance projects at all district facilities. And those are all, that's a key part of the plan. And then more specifically, we would, the plan included a new elementary, K-5 elementary school in Hugo. Onika would become a K-5 elementary. Currently, it's a 2-5 elementary. And then Hugo Elementary would become an early childhood center in the north. It's currently a K-1 building. North Campus, there would be an addition to allow it to be large enough to, for a single nine through 12 high school building. Sunrise Park Middle School would move to the current South Campus. Sunrise Park Middle School would become the site for our senior center and our early childhood programs that are currently in Normandy Park. Transition Education Center, which is in leased space up in Hugo, would move there, as would the district office. Central Middle School would expand to take over the current district center building, including where we're sitting. And then district-wide classroom and building updates to create flexible learning spaces, as Mr. Wald had indicated earlier. We've received a lot of community input so far. We've conducted two surveys. One you reviewed back in January and again more recently in May. A couple of highlights, the district is seen as financially responsible. The community rates the quality of our district very high, in fact, higher than what we typically, what you would typically see in a metropolitan area. 90% of respondents rated the quality of our district favorable. We can be very proud of that. And in fact, the strongest measure of that was really compared to, compared to others in the metro was, was off the charts in terms of the strong support we have. And then components of the plan that we just reviewed on the previous slide, those components of the plan were viewed quite favorably. We've had community conversations. We've, Mr. Wald and I have gone out to all of our buildings. We've met with parent groups. There'll be district leaders at Market Fest. So Mr. Wald or myself or others will be at Market Fest to talk about this plan. We're adding a new opportunity for folks to engage. We're having, at Cup and Cone, we're gonna have a cone with Dr. K in August. So we're, again, and there are other efforts as well to engage with our community, but we're trying to do that better and better in order to talk about this, about the plan. There's a lot of information on the district website. We started an FAQ document, for example, and that will be added to throughout the coming months, weeks, and months. But there's a comprehensive, there's a comprehensive amount of information on the website as it is, but we'll continue to add to that as more becomes available. So tonight, what we're asking you to do as a school board is to direct us to continue moving forward if you so choose. So the recommendation is that we would move forward and prepare for a work-study meeting on June 27th. At that meeting, we would review, again, similar to what we're doing tonight, but it would be in much more depth. And actually, the architects and construction managers and the financial advisors would all be there to go over the plan with you in great depth on June 27th. And then from there, we would move ahead so that on July 15th, you would, depending on the 27th goes, but July 15th, you would be, at that point, ready to call the election or not for this fall potentially. So that's why we're here tonight, to recap the process and to kind of lay out the plan going forward. And again, well, at your direction, we would continue and prepare for that work-study meeting on June 27th.
So you heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the action? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote with this one.
I was just gonna say thank you to all committee members and the tremendous amount of work and planning and organization that has been put into this. And it makes our job easier in terms of having committee, knowing that there's been community members already involved in the process, and so many of them. So thank you very much to everyone who was involved and all district employees who went above and beyond to make sure that there was community engagement in this process.
With that, we'll call for a roll call.
Fahey, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Wald. With that, we will move to our next operational item, E6, which is the action on scheduling a work-study session for June 27th at 5:30 PM. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So as just previously discussed and mentioned, we will prepare for a work-study meeting on June 27th. We don't have a, we don't typically have a work-study meeting in June. But again, given where we are in the facilities planning process, we need to have one so that we can, again, do what we said previously and go through the plan in great depth and have that conversation with you. At that meeting, we would be reviewing a draft of the review and comment document that would get submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education. We'd be reviewing ballot language. We'd be reviewing the financing, the financial plan of the facilities projects. So there'd be a comprehensive meeting. We suspect we can get it done in about an hour and a half, but we'll take as long as we need to. And then that would be, unless you need another work-study in addition to that one, that would be the work-study prior to the July 15th board meeting at which you would be, again, assuming it would proceed, you would be asked to call the election at that point.
So we have a recommended action to approve the work-study meeting on Thursday, June 27th at 5:30 PM at the District Center and Community Room 112, which is this room. Is there a motion to do so? Motion by Ms. Fahey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. All those, any discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, we have a work-study session for that scheduled. With that, we move to operational item, E7, action on the nutrition services grant. Mr. Wald? Just get you a chair up there, huh?
Still would have been great. We have a terrific nutritional services department. One thing I've enjoyed over the years, especially the last three, four years, is talking to new students when they enroll in the White Bear Lake Schools and hearing them comment on how much better our school lunches are from their previous, previous school they attended. And so as someone who's eaten more than a few of those lunches, I can attest to that. So hats off to Bridget Lane and her staff in the nutritional services department. Ms. Lane applied for a couple grants this year and was awarded them. The 2019 Agricultural Growth Research and Innovation Grant, Program Dairy Cooler Grant. The grant awards Lake Ariz Elementary, Matoska Elementary, and White Bear Lake Area High School North Campus each $1,500 toward the purchase of a new milk cooler, each, for a total of $4,500. Share Our Strength in the Minnesota No Kid Hungry Campaign awarded $3,500 to increase the number of meals served in our current summer meals program. The funds will be used to purchase a heated display merchandiser for South Campus. Recommended action is that the board approve the acceptance of the AgriDairy Cooler Grant for $4,500 and the Share Our Strength No Kid Hungry Grant for $3,500.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Fahey, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Alright, moving on to our last operational item, E8, which is the second reading action on school board policy 212, policy 701, policy 709, and policy 713. We will do these in one fell swoop, and if I can get a motion to adopt those policies.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding those, the adoption of those policies? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Will those policies are adopted? With that, we are now at the portion of the program where we will move into board forum, where school board members can talk about events, anything that's going on in the community. Ms. Ellison?
I just wanted to share that the History Day students that we honored a couple of weeks ago are currently at Nationals, competing against kids from all of the country. So they're there right now from Sunrise, and we will get the results on Thursday. So I just wanted to say, go Bears.
Perfect. Anything else? Mr. Wilson?
Yes, a couple of things, actually. Thank you. Earlier, when Mr. Wald was pointing out the funding that the school districts received from this year's legislature, I am certainly appreciative of the 2%. I know it certainly could have been lower. However, his slides pointed out the gap between student funding and what the expenses are. And if you recall the series of slides, the increases are mostly centering around insurance, is what we're discussing tonight. 2.5%, 4%, 13%. None of those are even really that close, or certainly under the 2% funding. So if this continues, school districts will never reach a break-even point. And so I would just advocate that we need to do whatever we can to influence our legislators in a positive way, to go ahead and increase the school funding. Ultimately, that's gonna hurt our students' educations and we just simply can't stand for that. And so I would, again, enjoin everyone, mostly the people that aren't here, but might watch this board meeting over community cable TV or read about it in the local media. So we need to stay constant in our action and move for those positive changes. Secondly, a huge, huge thank you to Mr. Monroe Heaney. Who is he? He personally donated $10,000 in equipment to our high school track and cross-country programs. Individual donation, $10,000. Simply extraordinary. Thank you again, Mr. Heaney.
Alright. And Ms. Fahey, go ahead.
Okay, and just one item that concerns a former student. The Equity Alliance Minnesota and the Professional Educator Licenses and Standards Board are conducting statewide cultural competency training. And former student and former school board liaison, Hakeem Martins, they are using his poem "Hoodie" in statewide training. So he has given permission for them to do that. So congratulations to Hakeem, and well done.
Beloy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that June 24th is the 20th Annual White Bear Lake Education Foundation Golf Tournament. So for those of you who have not signed up yet, I highly suggest that you do. It's a great event. It brings in a lot of money to the Education Foundation. It's one of their major fundraising activities during the year. You can find information on the website for the Education Foundation and you can sign up online.
I have two, Mr. Chapman?
I just wanted to mention, in the midst of the various consent items here tonight, our consent agenda is the HR area. And there's one particular individual of note who will be leaving our district, Mr. Garrison. And we have appreciated your service. The district has gone way ahead of where it was when I got on the board technologically. And so we very much appreciate that and will miss you. And I will miss listening to all of your adventures as far as travels are concerned. So best of luck to you in your future endeavor.
And I wanna echo that, echo what Mr. Chapman said and wish you well, Mark, and appreciate your service to the community and the students and for everything you've done for all of us. So thank you very much. Also, I wanna just send a shout-out and congratulations. Last week, we celebrated graduation. Class of 2019 is done now, got their diplomas, and are moving through the halls, as they say. And just wanna wish them all luck in their next endeavor and thank you all for coming out. And hopefully, they will still continue to watch this great program. With that, Ms., Dr. Newmaster?
Just one more thing. This district had such a great and busy couple of weeks with all the final activities and graduations and things. But the district also is welcoming and hosts any number of community events. And I look at our theaters and how they're full of all kinds of things. And Jeff Willey and the rest of them run from place to place, madly making sure all this high-tech and improved equipment works. And they hosted diverse things. We had the Korean dance and drum. We had people from Chicago's consulate come, and everybody is just impressed. And it was nice. We had over 300 people and North Campus is welcoming. The crew is awesome. And I'm hoping facilities will get it air-conditioned someday. It was 90-plus degrees in the theater. But it's a beautiful theater, and I think they're all just awesome. So thanks to White Bear and the planning before this. Thank you.
With that, we will move adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
I will second that, and we are adjourned.